Special session, or you could call it, you could call it an open session. And what this means is we're just want to allow all of you to meet each other. And identify some key issues that are there, and then we'll have a discussion about it. So there's no agenda directly set, it'll come out of the discussion. So what we'd like to do is now start with introductions, having each of you actually introduce yourself personally. Who you are, where you're working, et cetera. And maybe just identify one issue or one question that is really pressing for you that you'd like to discuss. Jesse's going to keep a list of those, and then we'll sort of start throwing those out after everybody's done. So in very short order, you know, in 10, 15 seconds, if you can each introduce yourself. Jesse's going to do this, to call your name out by alphabetically. So you can just go and do an introduction. So now we'll get a chance to meet each other. So Jesse?
Thanks, Bob. Just as a heads up, I may have just put you on mute. I apologize for that. But so come off mute when, when you hear your name and just heads up that it's going to be in alphabetical order. So just be prepared. But Claudette Pierre?
Okay. Hi, I'm Claudette. I am a psychologist. I'm in Boston. I'm the Chair of our Disaster Resource Network for the Mass Psych Association. And I am revitalizing this group. And I think my biggest problem, I don't think it's a problem yet, and hoping not a problem. My challenge is to figure out how I'm going to pitch this work such that I can pull back in people into our organization because they have left. And they've been gone, they sort of left before I became Chair of this. But kind of while I was becoming co-chair, and then the other person that pulled me in as co-chair left. And I'm now there. And I think I have a colleague and there are two of us that are going to join forces. We're both in this training together, which I am so thankful for. I can't even, I think this is actually revitalizing me, quite honestly, which I'm very thankful for. So we're trying to, I'm trying to figure out how to pitch this to my psych association. They've invited me into a board meeting eagerly to hear about this. I don't think the problem's with them. It's with our members and trying to get the right people in. And people in that will be excited about taking on a new challenge, which we're ready for. I mean, we've got the space for.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks so much, Claudette. For folks who just joined, we're doing a quick name introduction. We're going to go in alphabetical order. I'll call on you. And then just name where you work and a quick question. And we'll talk through some of those common themes that come up. Anina?
I knew it. It's the worst thing, being given an A name when you're born. I'm always first. Hi, everybody. My name's Anina Hanson. So I'm here in New Hampshire with an organization called Trauma Responsive Menanoc. We're a little offshoot of the local, the state-supported mental health agency for our area. But part of it, we have this volunteer work group comprised of people from social services all around the area. And it's pretty awesome. So I'm, we're trauma-focused, so this climate angle of things is, is a good fit for that. And I'm just trying to figure out kind of how to, for a new program in my area, and I'm a Department of One, how to get people invested in looking at the climate side of the whole mental health slash trauma slash the sky is falling to begin with, sort of climate, not literal climate that we're dealing with here.
Thanks so much, Anina. Next is Haley Bain.
Hi, everyone. My name is Haley Bain. I'm based in North Carolina. I'm in Raleigh. I used to support a lot of the resilience and trauma collaboratives with Beben, actually. But I've since transitioned to supporting system of care collaboratives, which are coalitions of people who come together to try to address barriers of youth accessing mental health services. And I'm still involved in a lot of the trauma coalitions for my local communities, as well as the state groups. And the thing that I'm most focusing on is how, very similar to Anina, how to use this lens of climate and how climate affects behaviors as another way to get buy-in for more folks in the area. We, I think, generally have a lot of consensus around trauma and resilience. And where everyone's very familiar with individual trauma, family, community, cultural, historical, systemic. But this is such a new lens that I had never heard before, that I'm really fascinated in and using this to reach a new audience. I'm excited to be here.
Thanks so much, Haley. We're thrilled that you're here as well. Helga?
Hi, everyone. Helga Lust in Rockville, Maryland. I work with Progress Pollinators, a government contracting firm that I started last summer. And I'm really interested, I've been working on trauma or in-trauma informed care for close to two decades now. But in 2018, the light switch flipped for me regarding climate change, and I really started to dig into the research. And I would like to nurture this concept of resilience and adaptation in federal space. Because so much of what the federal government does is reactive, and that doesn't help us. And we need to do more in adaptation and building community resilience. And that happens through intention. So I'm planning to build my resilience coordinating network through the Community Emergency Response Team, which is a FEMA sponsored volunteer corps here in Montgomery County. And I'm a part of that volunteer effort. But you know, these are folks that are volunteering to respond to times of disaster or mass casualty. And that seems like a good place to start. But I'm, yeah, I'm just really curious. There's so much, the more I talk about this with people, the more growth there is to the possibilities of where, you know, where this could go. So I'm really excited to be here.
Thanks so much, Helga. Helene, and I am sorry in advance for, please, please do let us know how to correctly pronounce her name.
Thank you. You are not the only one.
I'm sure.
The way you pronounce my name is not obvious because of the H. It's Elen. I'm French-Canadian, so it's a French name. So, so I'm Elen Fillion-Seroud. I live now in Brooklyn, New York. I am retired from a job I held in this neighborhood for three decades. And I'm a social worker, actually a group worker, and decided a year and a half ago to start climate groups for social workers who are unhappy with the way the profession is responding or actually not responding to the climate situation. There is very little that's been done in, in our profession. And many of us are feeling upset about it and wanting to do something, but also feeling isolated. So I started two groups. One of them includes someone here. And it's, it includes people throughout this country. And the other includes people in Africa, in Europe, and in this country. And it has been a really amazing journey to bring together people who all want to be able to make, operate change in a profession that really needs it. So, so I don't really have a question at this point, but I'm very happy to be part of this initiative because I feel that here people see reality and want to address it. And, and that's, to me, so important. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Elen. And next, we have Jennifer Fendia.
Thanks, Jesse. I hope that, hi, Bob. Good to see you again. I'm, I'm in Buffalo, New York. I'm a psychologist in private practice. And, oh, and there's Reb. I have been struggling to figure out where to plug into some of the organizations and systems that are already in place here in Buffalo. And, and maybe make some linkages between them that they, they might not see because they're busy doing the work in their area. So I'm involved with a grassroots gardening organization that has gardens across the Western New York area. The Clean Air Coalition that does remediation work and political work to clean up toxic sites left by industry that's pulled out of, of the, the area. A refugee and a Sylee group that is organized around textiles and stitching. And a lot of folks have come from areas that are already hit by climate. And what was the third, fourth one? I can't remember offhand. So I'm making little, a little bit of progress having initial conversations. And really, my hope is that the grassroots gardens, because they provide evidence of regeneration and hopefulness, can incorporate more climate-related wellness and resilience building in some of the neighborhoods. And I'm stumbling here, trying to think of what I, what I wanted to say. Well, maybe the next round. I did want to say to Ellen that if you're not aware of the Climate Psychology Alliance, oh, that's what I wanted to say. There's several members of the Climate Psychology Alliance who are taking this training this round. And we've already put together a little group meeting for, I think there are five of us. And we are very active in many ways, one of them being doing climate cafes. But lots of education and support for people who are not just clinicians, but anyone is welcome to join the Climate Psychology Alliance. And just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Jennifer. Next, we have Callie Tennis.
Hi, everybody. My name is Callie Tennis. I'm in Dauphin County, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. The project we're doing is called Healthy Village. And the question that I'm asking is basically about how do you engage in this work and honor your individual capacity, the capacity of your team, and the capacity of all the collaborators you're serving while working within a system that's dealing with a workforce shortage? And that doesn't have the capacity necessarily to serve the caseload in, in the focus area that it's chosen? And there's just a ton of examples how, you know, the idea of the amount of waste that's produced, just in the, the services for unhoused folks. It's just, it's a theme, the amount of waste that's produced and, and the carbon footprint of, of the way services and human services occur. It's, it's astronomical, and it's something that most folks don't notice. But when you're dealing with a burden system from a relational health perspective, like, how can you ask, do this one more thing, look at this one more thing? When, so that's the, it's, it's a, it's, it's an idea of honoring individual and organizational capacity around, you know, acknowledging relational health, especially when you're, you're working in a system that attracts folks who are, are, you know, Cazalino has this interpersonal neurobiology piece where he's talking about people who are attracted to the helping professions are often fit a relational pattern of being parentified children. So that they're, they're basically, you know, at risk of burnout before they even start. So like, that's, that's another piece, that people are, are operating beyond capacity. So avoiding burnout too is a big, a big piece of all that. I know that's not a refined question, but that's the best I can do.
Appreciate that, Callie. And I'm sure that that spoke to many people on the line. So I see lots of nods there. So appreciate that. Next, we have Lois.
Hi, thank you. I'm Lois Cody in Manchester. I am a retired Child and Family Service Worker, retired therapist from adolescent DBT and trauma-focused CBT specialties, as well as working on a community mental health diversity and cultural companies committee, competencies committees for, for my entire time working. So I saw, because of a major influx in our community, the formation of, of the model that community is medicine can have when the refugee needs outpaced the siloed ways that were delivering services. And we all had to, it forced us to come together and create a community of care. And it worked. And it was, it was, it was wonderful. But we soon went back to our siloed thinking in other dimensions of life. And recently, where I live, we've had a political upheaval. New Hampshire is a little bit of a hotbed of libertarianism these days. We're having some political struggles. So it's not easy to, not easy to convince people to cooperate. Freedom and liberty are the words right now. So, but we, we're going to do it. The most recent in Manchester is around the houseless population. We have, we're the largest, we're a small city, but the largest in the state of New Hampshire. And we have about a little over 70% of our houseless population are, are not from our community. So it took a while to unsilo everybody and realize that this doesn't matter where people come from. When they need help, they need help. And lo and behold, it's working again. Finally, with the realization, community of care that's required under HUD, if you want any of their money, is, is working again. And again, very expressive of this model of community as, as medicine, as healing, as, as the thing that's needed to lift up human beings to, 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 to health. So I am retired for, I'm going into my ninth year of retirement. I'm in my later 70s. But I am working as a volunteer currently on a project with a person who's in this, in this COP. And so I'm not going to talk about the program, but I'm just going to say how excited and, and delighted and honored I am that she wanted me to be a participant and a, and a contributor on the project. And it's not my community, but it is my state. So I'm, that's what I'm working on. And I will not speak of the program because it's not mine, but thanks.
Thanks so much, Lois. Mary Ann?
Hello. I'm Mary Ann Seifert from Lincoln County Public Health, she/her pronouns. And Lincoln County is a rural county in coastal Oregon in the United States. We're kind of in the middle, about 50,000 folks, very rural, very beautiful, but increasingly expensive for folks. So when you ask for one question, it's like, oh, my gosh, I have so many questions. But I think the one that's most burning for me as we go through this work and learn more is what language, what words, what visuals, what images really work for a broader audience? I feel like a lot of times, I've worked a lot in the environmental health field. And I feel like we, a lot of times we preach to the choir. And we need to kind of expand our reach to include everybody who wants to be included. And maybe more. So I think that's my number one question at this point is, how do we, how do we communicate better and not alienate people? Be inclusive, use words and visuals that really resonate broadly. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Mary Ann. It is hard to boil down to one question. So just with that, we'll say, folks should feel free to post questions on the forum to continue these conversations offline. Just throw that out there, but appreciate your question very much. Next, we have Melissa.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, I'm driving, so I pulled over to do my introduction and then I'll start driving again. But my name's Melissa Antiveros, and I'm here in Albuquerque. I live in Corales most of my time here in New Mexico, and then part-time in Las Cruces, where I'm employed at Community Action Agency. Some of my work includes, I was a marriage and family therapist, kind of retired from that, went to public health, served as the New Mexico Public Health Association President. And now at Community Action Agency, I'm a project manager where I helped develop a hybrid navigation program, looking at the whole family, being trauma-informed, trauma-responsive, but mostly, most importantly, is resilience-informed and letting our families know that they are resilient. Also, I served on a few boards in Las Cruces and in, well, throughout New Mexico, LC3 Behavioral Health Collaborative and the 100% Communities Resilience Leaders. With that said, my question is, so 100% resilience leaders, we're supposed to be a cross-sector collaborative? But I find that we're still working in silos. So we have our groups, right? We have youth, a youth group, we have a housing group. I served on the Housing Task Force as the Chair. Then we have the medical group and, you know, so on and so forth. But we're still not working collaboratively. Like, we do our work in our, in our sector groups, but we're not really communicating what is it and how is it that we are referring clients? How are we working together to make sure that we're working as a community collaboratively rather than in silos? And we continue to do that silo thing. So trying to work on that. One more thing is I served on the APHA Climate and Health Equity Board for a few years. So this is all exciting stuff for me. I'm excited to be here. Thank you guys for letting me be part of this group. And I'm eager to learn from all of you.
Thank you so much, Melissa. We're excited that you're a part of this group as well. Joe, got your chat. Thank you for joining us. Folks want to give a heart to Joe's comment in the chat to just send her best wishes in feeling better. We'll go ahead and do that, but no pressure to come on camera. We're off mute. We're just thrilled that you are here. Next, we have Reb McKenzie.
Hi, Reb McKenzie from Claremont, New Hampshire. And I guess I, I don't really have a question yet, so maybe you should come back to me. I'm not sure. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
Appreciate that very much. Thank you for being here. And next is Scott Vu.
Hi, folks. I'm Scott Vu. I use he/him pronouns. I work in suicide prevention here in Monoma County. And that's where Portland, Oregon is inside, if, if that helps you with location. So again, I work in suicide prevention. This isn't part of my job, really. I wasn't hired to work on the intersections of climate and suicide prevention and mental health. But I see it as a huge issue. You know, talking, you know, what Mary Ann and Melissa mentioned is this whole aspect of solaring. And that's what I've been trying to do is intentional desolering and accepting where my work. I've intentionally not decided to attend any of the suicide prevention conferences this year because again, you know, we're preaching to the choir and we're not bringing in anything new. And we're curating data from new data or, you know, just same thing, same old. So for me is, you know, how do I work with others? And I've started connecting with our environmental health and our Office of Sustainability here in Monoma County to work with them because they are doing some good things. And, and you know, right now, it's kind of like the merry-go-round where, where do I jump in? And, and what do I have to offer? So it's a lot I'm trying to process and digest. But again, I think maybe one way we could do this is stop, at least for me, when I hear the word subject matter expert, it's, I get chaffed at that because that's saying, this is my territory. I'm the expert. You can't jump in until I weigh in. And instead of making us more cross-trained, so to speak. So again, yeah, so many questions I have. And one thing, that's the reason why I posted on the chat is, are there any upcoming? And I thank Helga for this, is, you know, any conferences where we can interject? And I think one way is, yes, Joe, I've been meeting with Dan and Josh, and they're great. Thank you. But you know, maybe that we were more intentional that, you know, again, like I said, you know, maybe we all can start attending conferences that are not in our wheelhouse, so to speak, and then bringing that message. And I love to, if Bob, if you're not really doing it, I'd love to see your organization host a conference that invites more dissectors to just come in and, you know, just work together. Thanks.
This is Bob, real quick. We did, we actually held a conference in Portland in 2017, I think it was the last time. We ran them all over the country, and we've been thinking about doing it again, but we haven't got there yet. COVID got in the way.
That darn pandemic on so many levels. Appreciate that very much, Scott. Thank you. Tara Hegel?
Yeah, you did that good, actually. Hi, everyone. I'm Tara. I will always identify as a nurse first. Am I the only nurse in this room? Look at that. Yeah. So I'm a nurse. I have my PhD in nursing. So I'm also a nurse scientist, nurse scholar, professor of nursing at Hunter Bellevue School of Nursing in Manhattan. It's part of the City University of New York. My program of research is all about disaster preparedness, disaster recovery, and pretty much what are, what are nurses' roles in disaster preparedness? Because usually nurses just focus on responding to disasters in the recovery phase. And so I'm looking at preparedness more as preventive medicine. What I'm learning through this whole, this whole workshop is that I'm highly traumatized, and I probably can't lead any kind of groups that you guys are teaching me how to lead. I need to be a member first. But I actually am more interested in how I can use the concepts of community as medicine, your whole entire model. How do I weave that into my research? And that, that's one question. And I'm currently conducting a quantitative study about how adverse childhood events affect preparedness as an adult. Because from my qualitative studies in the past, I've heard several participants say stuff like, I had a rough childhood, and that's how I know how to survive during disasters. So now I'm looking at that quantitatively. So I've been taking notes of everything that we've been learning. I'm probably going to put some of that in my manuscript once we're done with the study. So that's my one question. How do I cite our homework handouts? Is that your book? Is that, am I citing this workshop? So that was one question. And another question is, how do I weave the concept that we're learning here into research?
Thank you so much, Tara. I really appreciate that. And I'll leave it to Bob to get you specifically on how to cite. But that, that broader part of how to weave the model in, I think, is, is a wonderful question that it sounds like is coming up for multiple folks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for being vulnerable about how this has impacted you personally. That's very real. And again, I'm sure that everybody on the line.
Yeah, I'm an open book. I'm an overshare too, just to let you guys know. You'll probably learn more about me throughout this whole process.
Tara Ralph?
Good morning, Tara Ralph. And I'm a social service emergency liaison. And I'm with the Office of Resilience and Emergency Management, which is part of the Oregon Department of Human Services. And, and my, my areas are Lane and Douglas County, which are two counties that are very interesting in that we go from mountains all the way to the coast. So we, I work with a lot of rural areas, as well as bigger cities like Eugene. So we, I work with a lot of rural areas as well as bigger cities like Eugene. And so we, my office was born out of the 2020 wildfires that we had in Oregon. And since then, we are still helping, as you can imagine, people rebuild their lives after the 2020 wildfires. But also we do a lot of preparedness and response related to, most recently, the winter storms that we had here where there were a lot of people that experienced really long-term power outages and things like that. And since we are tied into the Department of Human Services, those are things like SNAP benefits, child protective services, vocational rehabilitation, seniors and people with disabilities. So because we are tied into them, we also help people in a disaster that have access and functional needs or things like that. So we're reaching out to people with power-dependent medical equipment during a winter storm to make sure that they don't need special help. So I have a lot of experience. I've been with the state for 23 years now. But previously mostly with Self-Sufficiency Program and Child Welfare. So I have a lot of experience with trauma-informed care specific to people who are accessing those types of assistance through the state. But the climate resilience is very new to me since 2020. So I'm excited to be part of this. Also, I wrote down Mary Ann and Scott's names so that we could maybe collaborate in some way. And I've already connected with Joe. I knew Joe from public health from before this. But I'm super excited that we've already met for coffee and we're going to see how we can collaborate since we're at the same. And I think what I'm most interested in is a couple of things. One is how to really, I've been seeing a lot of community resilience building that's happening organically up the McKenzie where I serve. And so how do I help them continue those efforts and then also name it and recognize the work that they are doing and what it is? And then also, how do I assist even my entire team? My, because we are doing, we have funding from legislature for resilience grant for resilience hubs and networks. And so that just opened last week. So how do I maybe like help with those people who are awarded funding? Implement resilience, climate resilience in the resilience hubs, whatever that's going to look like for those communities statewide. So I have kind of two, two things in mind while I am participating in this.
Thank you so much, Tara. Appreciate both of those questions. And last, but certainly not least, Wendy, it's kind of like opposite of what Nina said with the beginning of the alphabet. You're just, or at the end, but we, Wendy?
Hi, thank you. I'm Wendy Mandorla and I'm here from Vancouver Island, B.C., on the coast of Canada. I live in a semi-rural area. I'm a child and family counselor and I'm a social worker. And currently I'm in private practice, but I've worked in several nonprofits in the, over the past 20 years. And a colleague who's not here today, but is in this workshop and I co-facilitated a free building resilience in chaotic times group. And one of the questions I have is around sort of how figuring out accessing funding and balancing sort of volunteer work versus, you know, paying the bills kind of work with all of this. I'm working right now, trying to connect with all the different organizations in our community. Because there are, there's a transition couch and a few, but just, we're trying to navigate that and figure out how to fit in there. And the other thing that we're kind of struggling with is we have a pretty, as in many of you, probably a bit of a politically divisive community here right now. So sometimes when talks happen, you know, around, especially around climate change in particular, there's certain groups that come to kind of argue and cause sort of difficulties during those meetings. Not necessarily to participate, but to disrupt, I would say. And so we're trying to, I like the wording around building resilient communities, not to, not to downplay climate. But how do we, it's again, this, you know, engaging everybody around community as medicine as opposed to kind of that initial conflicts that, and disruption that are happening, that are blocking some of this work. So those are, those are the things we're struggling with here. Thanks.
Thank you, Wendy. Thank you all so much. Very much looking forward to the conversation. Before we get into it, I assume that everybody knows Bob, having been on the conversation so far. But Kristi, if you just want to say a quick hello, saw you put Oregon Unite in the chat. But just so folks know where you and Christian, who's not able to be with us today, are from managing the calls.
Yes, absolutely. Hi, everyone. And it's so exciting to see social workers and Oregon folks over here. So formerly Kristi, she hears pronouns. And I work at Trauma-Informed Oregon, which is located within Portland State University School of Social Work. And Christian is our MSW intern accompanying us in this journey as well.
Thanks, Kristi. So there were a few common elements and themes through the various questions. And we won't be able to get to all of them. But again, hopefully as the COP continues and then as time moves on beyond just the 10 sessions alone, we'll be able to get to all of the questions and more that come up along the way to Reb's point. Maybe there are questions that we don't even know how to frame yet. But we will want to ask. So three, three kind of common elements that I think actually work together, but I'll simplify into sections. So one is how to get folks engaged who maybe exist outside of existing echo chambers to where people are already drawn into this work. But obviously this impacts a lot more people. Two, how to work across silos and collaborate across silos, which is a huge just, just barrier to trauma-informed work, I would say, on multiple levels, but certainly in this work because we need that collaboration. And three, I think that we can get to both of those. And then three would be, if we can get to it, the political exacerbation of issues where we, it's hard to even talk about this in certain political circles and people do really just come in and disrupt conversations, not looking for solutions, but just looking to not allow for these conversations to move forward. Were three common elements. I know that that doesn't address all of the questions, but across the various questions. And so this is now open for folks to discuss. But I think first, just what's language? What are some strategies that we can use to get more folks engaged in this work? What have folks seen as successful or some thoughts on how to do that better?
Jesse, let me jump in here and just offer some quick observations. And I've, some of you have heard this story before, but so we had, I'm in Oregon. And good to see all the Oregonians out there. We ought to have just a meeting with the Oregonians. That's great. But we had a bill in the legislature, Oregon Legislature, a couple of years back. It didn't get out because the legislature ended. That's one of those where the Republicans walked out. But, and it had to come through the Senate. I can't remember what the formal name was, but it was basically a Senate committee made up, the Emergency Response Committee or something like that. And it was all made up of people who were climate deniers. So the Mandy Davis, who works with Kristi, was involved and David Pollack from American Psychiatric Association and others. We went in and we talked to all the Republicans on the committee. And we found out they can't talk about climate change. But one of them worked on, ran a, an organization, business that worked on helping it with war, you know, as a private contractor and war issues, firefighting issues. And he said, you know, a lot of it, he sees PTSD in a lot of the people he works with and a lot of his staff. So we just focused in on that. And when we held the hearing, we never talked about climate change. We talked about how building resilience helps with PTSD, et cetera. So, and the bill unanimously passed out of that committee. All of the Republicans supported it. So it just brought it home to me again that connect with people, try to find out what their key issues are. What are they concerned about? And then connect with what you're working on with that. I'll just leave it, that's one example and we can now have a discussion about it. Any other thoughts, comments on how to talk with folks who don't want to talk about climate change or don't want to talk about resilience?
Yeah, Bob, my experience, not just in Lincoln County, but I moved down here from Washington State and I'm originally from Hawaii. But my experience almost everywhere is, is that you can find commonalities, right? And, and like you said, to focus on those shared values, like children and elders, you know? And here in Lincoln County, we have like over 30% of our residents are 65 and older, you know? People, people, I mean, you can't, I think it's hard for people to get negative about kids and about their elders. And another thing we found that resonated widely were community gardens. I think somebody earlier mentioned community gardens and focusing on how do we make our communities stronger? And what does that look like? You know, beeping pragmatic and sharing stories about successful actions we've taken together. That, that seems to resonate broadly. But yeah, I totally agree in my experience.
One other example I can offer, and then somebody else may want to jump in. So some of you might be, have been on this, we did two virtual congressional briefings on the federal bill. We have federal, the Climate Community Mental Wellness Resilience Act. And Representative Don Bacon, who's a Republican from Nebraska. We had told all the speakers, don't talk about climate change, but talk about disasters, et cetera, et cetera. Just don't use the term. So we're, we're getting ready to go, going through this. And suddenly Representative Bacon, who's the former general from Nebraska, he talks about climate change. And so back behind the scenes, we're all emailing each other, chatting each other, saying, okay, can we talk about it or not? We decided not to. But the point is there are many people who you think won't talk about it, but actually are ready to talk about it. But, or you could just talk about the effects of climate change and not use the term because it brings up all these issues about who caused it, is it human cause, blah, blah, blah? Just talk about disasters and stresses and heat waves, et cetera. Everybody knows that's happening and people can relate to that. Any other thoughts?
I was thinking, when listening to you guys, that maybe everyone should include a nurse on the team. We are the number one most trusted profession and we have this kind of trust with our community members. And we can speak to the health effects that we're seeing as a result of disasters and climate change. And you know, more asthma, more allergies, more heart attacks, everything. We, and that, that happens to everyone, everyone's loved ones are going through this exact thing. So that is my recommendation, include a nurse and have them speak about health effects on what's going on in the community. You don't even have to say climate change, say because it's been hotter lately. We're having more people with heat-related injuries in the ERs and stuff like that.
Thanks, Tara. That, that is also a great launching pad into the collaboration side. And so if folks have thoughts on collaboration and collaborating across silos and sectors, in addition to what we've been talking about, about how to get some of those other, other folks who may not be as literate involved. Please feel free to share ideas on that. Yeah, Reb, please.
So a project I'm working on called the Transformational Resilience Project was posted in the general discussion. So I would refer folks to there. But a group that has been very supportive of that is the New Hampshire Healthcare Workers for Climate Action, which includes that cohort that Tara's speaking about. So I would encourage, again, those of you who are interested in collaborating, that bringing in healthcare professionals. If you go to the Medical Society.
Consortium of Health?
Yes, yes, yes. It's Climate and Health. It's an overarching national organization that, that's Medical Society Consortium for Climate and Health. And many states have organizations that are part of that as a subgroups. For instance, the New Hampshire Healthcare Workers for Climate Action, that may be really open to working with you. So, yeah, it's a good group. Thank you.
Thanks, Reb. Haley, please.
Yeah, I just, I put this in the chat, but I wanted to kind of mention it quickly since it relates to both conversations that focusing on connection and really honing in on community champions, right? People who are well-liked, well-respected pillars of their communities or whatever their sector would be. And really using relationship building and relationships to people's advantage is always, for us at least, been extremely beneficial because it's, it's, sometimes people can be resistant to change, as we all know. But sometimes maybe people are more open-minded if they're hearing someone that they really value and respect say the same words that even I would say. So sometimes it's not only what you're saying, but who's saying it.
Thanks, Haley. Claudette?
Yes, it was occurring to me as I was listening to everybody that there's a group that I join once a quarter. And it's the Department of Mental Health in Massachusetts. And in that department, I think it's DMH, there are a lot of people that come to these quarterly meetings that the Police Association comes, the Red Cross comes, the, there are just different people from around the state that come and that, it occurs to me that those would also be groups that would be interesting to touch that I wouldn't have thought about touching for this, but it just popped into my head as somebody said, community champions. And I'm like, well, you know, I mean, there are these departments and places that people are that, just to get the word out about the whole idea of climate and disasters, because they all come because they're part of the disaster response teams around the state. Anyway, I was just thinking about that. That's it.
Thank you. And as you shared and as others were sharing, I was also thinking about how when we think about sectors and silos, a lot of times we think about education versus healthcare versus so on and so forth. There's also power in, a lot of times we get siloed into counties within a state or states within a country and building power across those sectors and silos as well to mobilize power upward is, is another way to think about this conversation as well.
Let me add something about siloing also, my experience with it. And I'll just give you an example. I used to direct a university research program at the University of Oregon. And we saw it on private lands, especially in watersheds around the state of Oregon. All the different agencies were doing their own thing. They had different mandates from up above. They had different funding schemes and then private landowners were doing their own thing. Water quality was going down, et cetera, et cetera. So we brought together in, in four different watersheds in the state of Oregon. We got respected community leaders. Well, sometimes they were mayors, sometimes they were county commissioners. Sometimes they were just residents and had them call, four meetings where we invited all the different public agencies, all the landowners, key landowners, recreational organizations. And we talked about forming what became called a resilience watershed council. And we worked on it. It was, the first couple of meetings were difficult. How do we assess the conditions of the watershed? Find out what's going on? How do we then develop watershed strategies, restoration strategies? And that took off like wildfire after people learned that they actually could benefit by hearing and working with others. It took extra effort initially, some time and effort, et cetera. We had to work out this decision-making processes, conflict resolution processes. That ended up, that we then ended up after doing this pilot, so to speak, for, I guess about a year and a half. Going to the legislature, we got the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Program established. There are now watershed councils all over the state and it took off all over the country. So if you start small, bring people together and help them understand. That's one of the reasons we got into this, this approach with mental health and trauma at the same time. We've seen it work. It just, you just have to help people get over the initial time consumption, the threats to their own approach. You know, people always deal with those issues and, oh, it's just going to violate my freedom and all that kind of stuff. And they, most of the time they find out that, that actually the benefits are six to 10 times greater than the And they, most of the time they find out that they actually, the benefits are six to 10 times greater than the downsides. You just have to help people move through that. And we've heard before, uh, provide food. You know, do it at a time where people are not working, you know, just try to help people deal with that initial, that initial could be six months worth, maybe it's a year of extra time and effort to realize how collaboration actually benefits them and reduces their workload. Uh, even though initially it might increase it. Any other thoughts on that issue?
Within the last day, I've been approached by, uh, someone that I approached initially with the community as medicine idea. And this person from our state college who's working in health policy contacted me and said, gee, I'm interested in this. I want to know more. And so I will be writing her this afternoon. And then, uh, I reached out to, I belong to the New Hampshire Behavioral Health um, disaster response team. And, uh, talked with the director there about what we were doing in New Hampshire. And thank you, Lois, for introducing the, um, idea of the project that we're working on together. Um, and Lois has been invaluable in helping this project move forward. So, um, but anyway, this gentleman said to me this morning in an email, um, what can we do in state, uh, disaster planning to help promote this project? So anyway, just reaching out to some of those folks can create some real connections that, that make, can make a real difference in what it is that you would like to do. Thanks.
Kind of a two parter, um, that that reminded me of, but one way that's been success. So I went on last year, a tour through the Midwest to try to create moderation across political dialogue. Um, and so kind of a two parter, one, in talking with people who are not the traditional climate change audience. Um, talking about how my allergies were really bad and talking about how hot it was, like asking questions like, man, it's been hot, right? Um, and wow, I didn't sneeze in. Opened up conversation that then allowed for us to discuss how these things are escalating. And so would not probably be allowed in a court of law because definitely leading questions, but was applicable. And for the obstructionists, um, who come in just to obstruct conversation toward political progress, which was discussed earlier. Also seen nationally in Moms for Liberty type groups in school boards specifically, there was a lot of dialogue there. A lot of times we try to meet emotional context with logic. And it's really helpful to disband that by meeting that with emotion first and then coming in with logic. But if we try to meet emotion with logic, if we think about it through a neurological lens, we're meeting the limbic system with the neo, like the prefrontal cortex. And it just doesn't line up. So sort of in that Bruce Perry regulate, relate, reason type of method and model. If we come in with an emotional dialogue and then come in with some logic on top of that, instead of trying to meet emotion with logic directly, it can be really helpful in, um, meeting that opposition where it is, and then sort of transcending beyond where the conversation begins at. So just wanted to share that.
There's only got a few more minutes here, so.
Yeah, there was one other question that might, that might be relevant for the last five minutes or so of conversation that came up in earlier questions, but is there any other discussion on the questions that we've discussed so far? Appreciate it very much. Um, there, there were a couple of questions slash comments about like, how to engage in this work while honoring our own capacity. There are a lot of volunteers on the line here, even for full time folks, we're probably working one and a half or two times F T E. If we're being honest with ourselves. And so how do we meet our own capacity? How do we meet our team's capacity and the capacities of systems to work toward change, given all the constraints and pressures that we feel? Um, was another line of conversation that came up.
Jesse, I'll take a first shot at that, uh, that, you know, when you want to create systems change, the most powerful method, but it takes time is to first change the mindsets of people. Because the way we think about things, our beliefs, assumptions, et cetera, then gets translated into systems and structures, you know, and then policies. Um, and, uh, but it takes time. So one of the, we, we haven't talked about this yet. We will try to get into it in a future community practices. The more you can first identify the, what you want to, want to call cultural myths that exist in your community that shape people's thinking about mental health and resilience and, and our climate change and other issues. And then these are stories, narratives that are shared widely, uh, often unspoken. You know, or they're just assumed and people make references to it. Um, and then develop a way to, to, uh, develop, start telling new stories, different stories that provide a different myth, if you will, or counter the cultural myth. They call myth because they're not true actually, but they're dominant in the community. Um, uh, so you really, so getting a different dialogue going, narratives going, stories out there. And the more you can connect the stories with actual people and their experiences and you're sharing that. That's the, the way to really begin some powerful social change. I'll say one other thing, um, that, uh, and again, we're almost out of time. But, um, many of the people who will go and disrupt meetings, uh, about climate change and other issues uh, are, some of them are paid to do it. There's not much you can do about that. Um, but often some of them are just, uh, angry at the world for their own situation. Uh, and tapping into that, helping them, don't, don't, if you start fighting with them and trying to argue about data, et cetera, it just escalates it. Instead, try to tap into what's going on in their life. Uh, and help them see that, well, maybe there's some ways we can deal with that and it might also help with these other issues. The more you can connect with people where they're at, rather than just arguing about, you know, oh yeah, temperatures are now 1.5 degrees Celsius, blah, blah, blah. That, that doesn't usually work. And so it gets back to the narratives again. Data rarely helps change, uh, cultural myths, so to speak. It's, it's stories and connecting with people and making it, connecting with something personal in people's lives. It takes time, takes effort. It's not what we're trained in. You know, we're trained in all these, uh, uh, evidence-based approaches and et cetera, et cetera. But, um, that's really where the, uh, where the change has, has to start. Um, uh, but there's different ways to get in it. We will talk about that in the, in some upcoming, uh, community practices.
Appreciate that, Bob. I know that we're short on time. If someone has to hop at the hour, we, we don't want to keep you, but Haley and Anina, I see your hands and so would, would love to know what you want to share.
Sure. I'll speak quick. Um, I come from the trauma and resilience world. So it's kind of how I'm phrasing all of this. But one thing that's been really helpful for me is just living into the values that I'm trying to change the systems to become. Um, and letting people self-select into what they need. I think it's huge for health or human services. We often are very caring individuals who would give, what's the phrase of the shirt off our backs to someone in need. Um, and so it's a both and like, we can do that and we can take care of ourselves. And some of the best advice I've ever gotten is to just pretend that you're working in the world that you want to be. Um, and it all just like slowly will start to shift around you. If you start to phrase your meetings and frame your meetings and structure your days to take care of yourselves and pretending like that's how the systems operate. Like very, very slowly, but, but surely things, things start to seem like they start to fall into place. So that's been a really helpful, kind of, we talked about reframing, like reframing the way that we approach the work to take care of ourselves first. Um, it's like the airplane, the airplane analogy, put your own mask on before, before those of the children and people around you. Um, so just living into that, that wellness.
Thanks, Haley. And Alin?
Um, following on what Haley was saying, um, I'm a group worker. And I, I really believe in the power of groups to, um, give, uh, space for people to share feelings and, uh, thoughts and eventually figure things out together. Um, and I think groups can be a, a really amazing resource for all of us to, um, sustain ourselves in this work. Um, it's my professional bias, but I, I really, uh, believe in it because I've experienced it so many times.
Thank you for sharing. Thank you to everyone for sharing. Bob, do you want to take us home?
Yeah, I, I can thank you all. We see some great questions here. Um, uh, we're going to, uh, post all this information on the climate forum website. Um, so, uh, and let's continue these conversations. If you want to continue it, continue it on the climate forum and ask people questions. And, and let's get this debate going, uh, cause there's a number of other issues that obviously we didn't get a chance to talk to, but talk with. But, um, I want to thank everyone for participating and look forward to continuing this process. And let's just get the dialogue going. And especially if you now know there's other people in the Northeast, why don't you start communicating? We in Oregon will start communicating and try to get this kind of, uh, work going together. So, uh, with, and without any other ado, we thank you all for taking the time to join us today. Uh, and we look forward to seeing you next Tuesday, if you can make it. Great. Take care, everybody.
All right. Thank you.